Hello, Mr. Order. First done thing is Melissa Ramonis, request authorization to put the station out for bid, the railroad station out for bid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promise I will be faster than I was at the last meeting. I believe you all have the updated, needed plan as of last Monday. We had made a lot of progress on the questions raised by the board and by the public. And I do have a little bit of additional information. Since I put that out, I have been able to talk to both our engineer and to DOT. They both have agreed that what we have proposed will work fine. The major change that we would be making is holding back fifteen thousand dollars of the Historical Society money to pay for the cost of materials for the project. So when we announce how much money we have, when the project goes out for bid, we'll just deduct fifteen thousand. That allows us to purchase, paint, the decking, the trim, that we'll need to finish the project. So that would be the major change. We're looking at if the board approves tonight, the engineer will do the changes over the next two days. They'll go to DOT by Thursday. DOT has promised to review them Friday and Monday, which hopefully will allow us to get this in the paper by Friday, May 18th. So that's the timeline you can look at. So I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, your period was said. Any discussion? Village, you got anything?
How much did you save?
I'm sorry?
How much money did you save? It happened to be fifteen thousand in historical.
Right. What we would do, we had, the Historical Society has thirteen, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Right.
Then we were going to put in the pot for the bidders. So we, instead of doing that, we would pull that money out and hold it and not put it up as money available for the contractor. So the way it works is when the bids are open, we have to announce at the beginning of the bid opening. Carol, I think, usually will announce how much funding there is. And that way, the bidders know, because it's complicated with all the ad alternates, they know whether your bid is the good bid based upon that amount of money.
How much would the Village of Rouse's Point have to, the taxpayers have to put up this year if this, if a bid was accepted and the project started to take fruition?
Right.
How much money would the taxpayers of the Village of Rouse's Point have to put up?
Long-term or short?
Short-term.
Well, all of the bills have to, it's a reimbursement project, so all of the bills would have to be paid. And then, so, you know, that's, that's the way the process works.
True, but do you have a ballpark figure, like say within the next year and a half?
Well, the project has to be substantially completed by January 30th. So within this calendar year 2012, we would expect if things go as planned, that if the bids hit right at cost estimates, that it would be about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand for the contractor cost. And then that would be put in in progress payments by the contractor. As soon as the payments are made by the village, they get turned around to DOT for approval and then they go for reimbursement.
Okay. So the Village of Rouse's Point, between now and January, how much would we have to put up?
I, I would expect about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand.
The village?
Ideally, you would not have to have that all out at the same time. You know, they've been pretty good. They've turned these payments around within about a month. So there should hopefully be a payment, a payment request, a flow of cash back in. But I don't know how the funds, funds are set, whether you have, be able to float that out of your current account, or whether you have to do a revenue anticipation note to cover that.
I'd like to make a motion to hold this off for a couple of weeks while we discuss this.
Hold it off, that will build more time.
I thought we had another thirty days or?
No. We don't do it tonight. We don't do it tonight, and then you want to get the bids out in time and get it back and get, get the project going.
Arsen, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Can we do this?
It's like Melissa said, you can either, you know, you can either pay, pay as you go and get reimbursed, or else go out and borrow a transportation. Like, it depends, you know, it's just like all the other projects, it depends on, on your completion time, how much is done, what the bills come in at. You know, I don't think you're going to get a bill for seven hundred thousand dollars out at once.
And we can't do it here ourselves right now. We can't start doing anything.
No, the, the work, the volunteer and in-kind work will come at the end because the, all hazardous materials have to be taken out first. So the rush is to get the contractor in, get the work done that has to be done for the RA project deadline, because that, the money runs out as of, as of February 15th. That's it for September.
February 15th is the bid. So we got, we got money for the insulation of it from the IEEP.
So this lingered for quite a while. If we'd have hit this, hit the ground running a year or two ago, we probably wouldn't be in this position.
We tried to. Melissa's been working.
No, I know, I know, yeah, I understand.
We hit the ground running, but it's, it's been a long, that and a lot of hurdles.
I know you have, but all the money that's been going into the project over and over, and it's just, then we got to do it again, and I mean.
Well, actually, the only additional cost was twenty-five hundred dollars for the engineer to do the rebid, and then what you paid came in. And I think what you'll find is that's not necessarily uncommon on projects like this, that, you know, the, the bid came in higher than expected. So what we had to do is try to figure out how to simplify the project so that we can make it more appealing to the contractors.
I just don't know how we can do a project like this with the way this economy is, and we don't know what's going on up in, maybe we're here with the Pfizer thing. I, I just don't.
Well, we can go up to bid, but it comes back way over bid.
I, guess what?
I wouldn't personally vote to bond any money to, to two hundred thousand or whatever. You know, I'm just using a hypothetical thought. I mean, I think we should go up to bid and.
I was thinking, sure, I was thinking around four hundred thousand, you said seven hundred and seventy-five, I'm like, oh.
Any way you look at it, we've already spent one hundred and sixty-four thousand and we have to pay it no matter what. So we're better off to go to bid and try to get this done, get reimbursements as soon as we can, rather than just going on longer, just get it going.
Is there any, any extra money that has to come out that put it out to bid? Putting out to bid, does that incur any kind of cost that's going to take away from the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand?
The only cost, Brad, that I, comes to mind to me is the legal cost of advertising. Carol had to put a legal in the press and public thing, which would probably cost a couple hundred, Carol, I would expect.
That's a hundred.
Yeah. So, so there's that cost. And then, the CDs of the plans will come to the village, and the contractors will send ten dollars to get their CD, and the village will mail it out to the contractor. So there's that.
No. Would it help for bid and see how they come back? If they come back over the money, the money we got, well, we're pretty well done, right?
At that point, you will have, you will have tried twice, you'll have done your best?
Exactly.
If they come in at bid or under, how much is the village taxpayer going to have to put up again? Is it still seventy hundred, seventy-five thousand?
No, it's.
It, that, that's, that's.
When the project is all done?
Right.
What would be the estimate that the taxpayers of Rouse's Point would have had to pay?
For the, the construction?
The whole complete project, the railroad station?
Well, if all comes, goes as, as planned, unless the board decides to put additional money in, there's no contribution other than the fact that you've been paying me past the original amount of money that was in the HUDD grant. So there, you know, there's no planned general fund money in this construction project. Everything that has been spent so far has been reimbursed by stimulus money.
But out of the one point two million, how much is left?
I don't have the one point two.
It was an original one point two million, right? Was it what?
No, it was a eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. Do you have, Bill, do you have this, this, the sheet on the funding that kind of details it? It was an eight hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollar RA grant, that stimulus funding. We had ninety-five thousand from a HUD earmark. So that's the total funding. And then we added in additional funding that the Historical Society provided. We have RA, our IEEP and power for any money we pulled in. So that's where we've been able to make the difference, so.
What about the Rouse money? The Rouse grant? The money for the Rouse, what about those?
Not, not really with any grant on that, Bob. The, the only grant that we've gotten since I've been around is, is this big DOT bid.
Didn't he get a con, a grant from Congress when he killed?
Oh, that's the ninety-five thousand dollar earmark. Right, right. And that's added into the.
Well, we're going for, I have to come to public for this discussion. But I like to, that, all my life has been involved in reimbursement and payments. Now, you could set up a program for your contractor to save, contract here with Luck Brothers, okay? Luck Brothers submitted the bill to the village, Arsen has to pay the bill, put it in a computer system for reimbursement from the controller of New York State. And what's the turnaround for that?
This has been a very good project. DOT has turned it around in Arsen, four to six weeks maximum.
Actually, less than that.
Yeah, they've been very fast. But they have their whole, I think the federal money is, is there to reimburse with.
Then if it's that way, then you, you turn around and be around billing for about sixty-five days. So then, you have another bill, because you get paid, you get submitted every, every thirty days, bill submit, billings. The engineer has to proof the bills that's presented, gives it to the treasurer, you guys approve it, you submit it to the, the DOT, and they will save the thirty or forty days from there, you need to go sixty-five days, and somebody has to be on that all the time. Can't miss one payment. Otherwise, I would, on the special computer program, don't mix it up in any other accounts.
I understand, I just say, I don't know where it's going to end.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, the Congress payment's, you know. Well, I'd make a motion to put it out for a bid again, see how it comes back, if it's way over budget, then I guess we're, we're done, that's it. Any other discussion? No discussion, vote, who is assigned to buy?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to draw your attention to a couple of other items that, again, are going to need a fairly quick decision from the board. We talked about it a little at the last board meeting, and we decided to try to split this up so we weren't trying to do all of the projects at the same time. The two that are of special interest right now are the two, actually, most recent grants the village has. The 2011 grants that were applied for last October and awarded in December through the regional council process. I Xeroxed for you so you could have it. We ended up on the first page of the North Country Awards. It's the first handout that I gave you. And you can see Village of Rouse's Point, the micro enterprise program grant, and the waterfront grant for implementing the downtown and waterfront plan. And since I was, I met with you last, a couple of things have happened that have brought the importance of acting on this even more to my mind. First of all, we are being tracked now, like never before, on implementation of these grants. They're Governor Paul Mo's grants, and he made a commitment to move these programs quickly. So our progress is being tracked on spreadsheets. So everybody's watching. And our next shot at twenty-five million in Empire State Development money for the North Country is based upon how well we implement the plan. And Rouse's Point is holding two out of the seventy-two priority projects. And so by the next board meeting, I would really appreciate if you could give me an idea of if you're going to move forward on the micro enterprise program grant and the local waterfront grant for the hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that's the one that does the DNH site work and the, has, is to match the undergrounding of the electric and the ornamental streetlights on Crack Street. And so if I could just call your attention to a couple of things on that next packet. It's the memo that I sent to the board last month. Just want to show you, if you go past my memo to the third page of the packet where it has revitalization project status update. The first grant that says there, and it looks, it's April 9th, 2012. One more. And, okay, so past the memo are the actual individual grants. The micro enterprise grant is the grant that the village can pass out directly to local businesses, new businesses or businesses five years old or less, to help them with upgrading and, and improve their profitability by hopefully cutting their costs. So if, if the village is going to do this, we really should get started in, at the next board meeting with putting out a request for proposals and hiring a firm to help out. So that would be one that's, that's urgent. We've talked about the next one down, the 2011, the local waterfront program grant, the hundred and twenty-five, as I said, for the finishing up the station work. That is another one that will be tracked. And if you look at page two, you can also see that this is the one that includes funding for you to have help for all of the revitalization project management services. There's thirty-five thousand in that grant to help you with the micro, to help you with the grant administration, to help you do coordination with the business community. You're in position, as you look ahead, you have some people that you're going to need to extend the hand to for assistance. Empire State Development, remember, they're the ones that are tracking us on these projects. Homesick Community Renewal is the funder of the micro enterprise. If you want other business assistance funding, or you want an economic development strategy post-wi-fi, they're the ones you're going to go to. And then, of course, you have Gary Douglas and the Chamber and the Regional Council. So a lot of important coordination to be done. So that would be the other grant that, it would be essential that we move forward on. Okay? And the only other one that I, I am just going to leave you with tonight, the last packet I handed out to you, and I realize this is a lot of paper, and I just, you'll have time to, to read and process over the next couple of weeks. But this is River Street's last major project out of, product out of that code revision project they did for us. It's for our 2005 EPF grant, and it's downtown revitalization organizations and programs. And so it's recommendations to how to help, how the Village of Rouse's Point can act to help local businesses. And if you look at page one on the executive summary, not many of these ideas are new, but they're pointed out and their possible funding sources are, are there for you. Like, supporting an merchants association. You have a business group that's meeting? Hopefully, that will formalize into an merchants association as a fair, valuable way to communicate with you. The importance of improving compliance with codes, big, big issue for businesses. Inventorying vacant properties, trying to figure out what happened to those properties. If you have grant funding for this, that would allow you to even potentially look at how to bring in more accommodation choices in the village, which, again, is a big concern in the business community. And then sending out or developing promotional materials. On the top of page two, providing financial assistance to businesses, and that's what the micro enterprise grant that you're holding is for. There are ideas in here. I know many of you are very interested in assisting businesses. There are a couple of different types of property tax relief that not many places in Clinton County use, but that could be used for your businesses. And then finally, the LDC, but that's down the road, should you ever have to acquire a new property, maybe as part of redevelopment efforts. So, again, if you would like to do what we did in between the last meetings and sit down with me and, and go through these, I would be very glad to do that. Need extremely productive on the DNH, and just let me know, and maybe you can get something scheduled. Unless you have any questions for me, I'll go sit down and let's have a conversation.
Yeah, we can make a meeting.
Thank you.
Yep. Any comments from the public?
Dennis Roberts, 43 Smith Street. I, I noticed that our village attorney is here tonight, and I thought that this board was adamant about reducing expenses. I was on the board for over two years, and I don't ever recall the village attorney being here. Unless he's volunteering his services, I retract my question, but if he's not, like to know why, why we're paying a hundred dollars an hour to have an attorney at a village board meeting.
I just wanted to have him here, basically to stop any conflicts that are going to probably end up being.
Well, if, if I may, Mayor, I know there, there's a couple of matters on for executive session, I know as well. And, you know, I've had, you know, some conversations with members of the board about some of the matters that exist, yeah, just a couple of the matters that are on for executive session, and they asked me to appear tonight until he's discussed, Melissa, I was with them. So that's, my understanding is why I'm here tonight.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Minutes of the previous meeting. Well, the regular meeting of April 16th, the special meeting of April 19th, that was for hiring of the water plant, special meeting of April 46th, that was for hiring at the water plant, and a special meeting of April 30th. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meetings, April 16th, April 19th, April 26th, and April 30th.
I'll second it.
Any discussions? Any more discussion, the answer, who is assigned to buy?
Aye.
Okay, you all have a copy of the bills. Any additions or deletions, Scott, Arsen?
We have one, we have one addition, it's to Melissa Ramonis LLC. It's 200345, it's for consultant services for the 2005 EPF and the DNH.
I make a motion to pay the bills tonight as amended?
Seconded.
Any discussions? No some discussions? Vote, who is assigned to buy?
Aye.
Okay, Carol, you got correspondence?
I do. The first item I have is from the American Legion. The American Legion Auxiliary of Rouse's Point is requesting the Village of Rouse's Point to grant us permission to distribute copies for donations. These copies will be made available at various locations throughout the village. The remaining employees at Pfizer are still one of our largest contributors. Therefore, your permission would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your cooperation, Janice St. Johns. This is from the Rouse's Point American Legion Auxiliary.
I'll make a motion for, so, about this.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Vote, who is assigned to buy?
Aye.
Yep?
The second letter I have is Angelo's Pete's Grill, ask for alcoholic beverage control law, section 64 and 109. It is our requirement to inform you of our intent to renew our liquor license. The liquor license term begins July 1st, 2012, and expires June 30th, 2013. That's Angelo's Pete's Grill.
Okay, that's just, just for information. Ready? Is that it, Carol?
Yes, it is.
Okay. With the words of the mayor and trustee, hey, mayor, major discussion, the ME, UA, Northern Regional Meeting. Myself and Ryan Pelkey went out to that, and it turned out to be very informative. We made some contacts, so I know the people better, so it's going to get to that one. An appointment, yeah, now we got an appointment of Charles Chukraish as a member of the planning board. Any motion for that? I'll make that motion?
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? No discussion, and vote, who is assigned to buy?
Aye.
Request an executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Any motion on that?
I'll put them, I'll make a motion to request an executive session.
Seconded.
Gee, roll call, vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Reed.
Aye.
Trustee Nuskill. Aye. Okay. And mayor, both side, too. All right, Ryan, the show is yours.
Excuse me, Mayor, you forgot, the, the Northern Regional Meeting is going to be held in, it's being hosted by Tupper Lake.
Ryan asked me if he could go to that, so somebody from the board should go also.
Right, I believe it's being held in, oh, where did we find it?
Lake Placid.
Is it Lake Placid?
Yeah, it's Lake Placid, yeah.
Oh, yes. I thought it was another place.
No, you can go.
Okay, it's Tupper Lake it's going to be held.
I'll make a motion to allow Ryan Pelkey, and if somebody wants to go from board, I'll, two people, whatever, I'll put it in front of a motion to allow to see people go to the, the Northern Regional Meeting in Tupper Lake.
I'm going to that. Okay. Any discussion? Vote, who is assigned to buy?
Seconded. I can second it, put the mayor in.
Okay. I also, yeah, one more thing. Need a motion to declare the 1992 caseload 621 surplus. This will be advertised as a surplus item. I need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Any discussion? Any more discussion, vote, who is assigned to buy?
Aye.
Yeah, I believe that. Now, here, here, turn, Brian, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. First item on my agenda is I request an executive session to discuss police personnel. I'll put that in front of a motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? No discussion, vote, who is assigned to buy?
A roll call.
Yeah, roll call, motion.
What's that? Oh, roll call, yeah. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Reed.
Aye.
Trustee Nuskill, aye. And mayor, both side.
Okay. The second item on my agenda is, I just want to give a brief update on the IEEP, the Independent Energy Efficiency Program. We are insulating houses in the village, and now we can insulate businesses and commercial property. Saving energy twelve months of the year is a good way to run a business. We are looking into doing the village office, the heat and cool exchange pumps in that nice old building. We also want to do some work at the library. We'd like to put some more insulation in the attic, and we'd like to put insulation and do some work in the basement, and that would come out of the Energy Efficiency Program. We hold back to serve a percentage of the electric bill money, and we use this to save energy in the village. So it's critical that we spend the money, but it's critical we're all on the same page. Dave Trudeau was here last week touring the village last Wednesday, and we're looking at commercial high electric users in the village. We'd like to insulate their buildings. We looked at windows and doors, but the return on windows and doors is not like it is with insulation. So we're going to go ahead with that, and we contacted, we're thinking about doing the church, the rectory, the KC, the OKC buildings. We're going to contact Crestview Apartments and see about insulating up there, because it's saving everybody electricity and it's saving heating and cooling. So we're going to go ahead with that, so. The other item on my agenda tonight is request permission to hire an engineer to review the plan submitted for the reconstruction project at Layhouse Point Marina. John Cooper, would you explain to us exactly what you'd like to do?
The Marina has submitted a plan to the planning board, and it looks pretty good to us, but planning board members don't feel that we are qualified to approve a plan out over the water with the flow and this and that and the other thing. To pay it safe in the interest of the village, we put it out, and we're going to have to ask an engineer, we can come up with a figure, but ask an engineer to check the plans and things to see if it's feasible. I think two opinions on this, because it's such a big project, we're talking fourteen-hundred feet out of the lake, at this time, I think we should have, we, the planning board members pretty well know this stuff, but I feel that we're not qualified for this, and it's a total reimbursement from the applicant. So if the village puts out a thousand dollars, the applicant's going to have to pay us back. And the thing is, George was here, well, you know George, and we told him as soon as we have a figure on it, we're going to submit it to him, because he'll have to know ahead of time. But it's a village. But it's a village thing, it's a protect the village, and I feel this is the way we should go.
Okay, put that in front of a motion. Okay, I'll put that in front of a motion, request permission to hire an engineer to review the plans.
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion?
I'd like to talk to the engineer with the post guard in the Army Corps first. Who's gonna pay for all this?
It's reimbursable by the applicant, says the lady who's sitting there.
Again, Tom Renee, the, I believe the village ordinance provides that the applicant has to actually reimburse the village any costs or expenses that they incur in that. There is a environmental review that is ongoing. We've actually notified the Army Corps of Engineers, we've notified the State Department of Environmental Conservation, as well as OGS, so they are involved in the project. And the applicant has submitted applications to those entities as well, since they need approvals from them. So there is a coordinated review going on with respect to now the planning board of these other agents.
I understand that, sir, but is it the purview of the planning board to look into offshore projects?
Well, it ties into village property, so essentially, we do have review with respect to certain aspects of the project. Some of the aspects, aspects, aspects of it, we don't. For example, the aspects dealing with the Army Corps and/or DEC. But, I mean, that's one of the reasons, as Mr. Cooper pointed out, that the board felt the necessity or that it was very important to have another set of eyes looking at the project other than the board, who may have some expertise in dealing with those entities, dealing with this type of project, which I certainly told them I thought it made a lot of sense as well.
Oh, I agree with the comments, I agree with that. We'd love to protect the village any way we can, but I just wanna stop the leading.
Well, again, no matter, whatever the cost is, the applicant has to reimburse the bill.
We want business to come in here, yet we keep charging them. I understand.
All right. Whatever you need to do. Okay. Yes, we're gonna vote, make a vote, vote yes or sign of aye.
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 I'll say aye.
Okay, that's all I have to report, Mayor Baker, thank you.
Okay, trustee Martin.
Just a couple of things to report, Mr. Mayor. One was the annual water report. Just to go over a couple of things that the auditor who come by and did it, he observed the plan and said it was in very good condition, that the guys have been doing a really good job. Does state that the water tower is located on Academy Street, it lacks a security fence. So I don't know if that's some kind of mandate that at some point in time we're gonna have to come across, and it doesn't really say, just in the report that lacks a security fence.
I could answer that. They want us to put a fence up there, and we're probably gonna start with a camera and go from there, and eventually we probably will have to put a fence up there. But, I mean, if somebody really wanted to do something, the fence is really not gonna keep them out, you know, you just drive a truck through, I mean.
We got experience enough.
Yeah, yeah, so we're looking at getting a camera, actually, to put a camera up there and enhance the camera system in the village.
That was just pretty much it. It did say that with 2011, we had that record flooding, and the guys did a really good job at maintaining and keeping us with drinkable water. Also, second on the list, request authorization for Brian Geno and Eugene McPhair to attend NYRWA seminar that is going to be on 7/10 of this year. Can I put that in front of a motion?
Yes. Any discussion? No discussion, vote yes or sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anything else, Brad?
Yes, there was just a letter I had gotten from Chief Moore, which he wanted me to bring up about some rollover of some funding. He just wanted to have a brief explanation on the account that he was rolling the money over for. Account 34104.01.413 of 2,500. That was for a possible grant coming soon for a washer and dryer for the gear. At the moment, we are presently going over to Alberg Station and a couple of other different places to get our gear washed. I think party farming should be a little bit more self-sufficient, being able to take care of our own laundry. Account number two, 34104.1.464, $3,000, that is for modifications on 306 to account for the new jobs that we're gonna be having placed in. And the last one is $500 from account 34104.01.470, that is for some floor paint to repaint part of the station.
We'll incorporate those in the last budget resolution for the year on the Saturday November 1st, if we put the budget modification for that.
Okay, all right. Is it, Brad?
I'll say it. Thank you.
I'll second that.
You got a motion? Form a motion?
No. No, you don't need a motion.
Okay, you need a motion, that's what I thought. Okay.
I only have one thing, Mr. Mayor. Request a motion to authorize SCAP Asia to attend traffic stop training at the South Presbyburg on June 11th and June 12th.
Seconded.
Any discussions? No more discussion, vote yes or sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just have a couple of reports to make. The library is currently applying for the Joseph F. Schubert Library Excellence Award, and that is a $1,000 award given to the library if their application is picked. The application focuses on the library as a community center, bringing the children and families into the library for free art and cultural events. Just in case you haven't noticed, the library has been very busy trying to help out the community. They've been doing movie nights, they've been doing kids' projects, they bring in cracking projects. It's a very active place, and I just wanted to give them a little bit of recognition for the work that they try to do. Most of the work that they do is through grants, and this is just another little supplement that they can get to help them continue that. And the next piece is that the annual wastewater treatment plant inspection report came through, and it was a success. There was no failures for anything.
Very good, very good. Okay, other reports? Arson?
I have a couple of items. The first one is, is I have another municipal board authorization resolution for the paint. Carol gave you a copy to change the names and accounts. This one here is for Shantland National, so I need someone to move that to the board. Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow the, they're gonna change over to the, they're just changing the names and accounts. Change the names and accounts for new board members. I'll put that in front of a motion.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Okay, vote yes or sign of aye.
Aye.
Brian?
Brian has, what do you have?
I got one other item.
Oh, you got another item? I'm sure.
I just want to briefly read a press release that was sent out. Commencing on June 1st, 2012, the Village of Rouse's Point Municipal Electric Department will again make available to residential customers of the system who have a 12-month clear record with the utility, the opportunity to pay their electric charges by a budget billing arrangement based upon previous year's usage and projected per kilowatt hour, including supplemental power charge. And customers' annual electric expense will be estimated and then paid in 11 payments. If the remaining month used to reconcile the underpayments or overpayments. Anyone wishing to participate in this program should contact the county department. All customers presently on the program will remain within the budget amount appearing on the top portion of bill commencing in the June bills. This program is open to all residential customers who meet the above requirements. Sign, Becky Delkey, treasure.
That's it? I got one more thing I did. State of New York's gonna be blacktopping the street here, Lake Street, and Joe, Joe Tragwell would like to take it out of the state, give us the blacktop that they're gonna throw away, and put it in his parking lot, and it'll be used for the shazzy hardware and any business that wants it. That sound all right to you guys? All right, okay. All righty, that's it. Other reports, oh, we got that all done. Open the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time, they do so.
I do, John Burtz. Yep. Montgomery Street. On the last board meeting, through the budget, obviously was pretty heated, and some people probably got a misunderstanding of what village trustees can do and cannot do when it comes to employees in the village. If you look at your Nikon Conference of Mayor's manual that you receive, each trustee gets one, you look on page 2.5, and it'll tell you exactly that trustee, and I got a copy over here, but I'm sure if you look in your manuals, you should all get a copy and probably should read it. It says that trustees do not possess any inherent authority to supervise or direct the work of subordinate village officers or employees. I think that should give you an idea of how you can go about supervising your police department when the time comes. Just to make you aware of it.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay, we adjourn the meeting. Three sets for five minutes, move to the executive session.
Seconded.
All the way.
Aye.